It's the best.
Too much hurting yesterday.
Actually, yesterday was a very show. We had a little party in the weekend.
Titanic.
Yeah, yeah.
For OZV's birthday yesterday, she wanted to see Titanic. No. And like, Mia was like, it's like a field trip. So then they went shopping.
Call me to order. Oh, please rise. I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on the business that's before us this evening. And please join me to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with equal justice and power.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Alderman Begley.
Here.
Alderman Bassow.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Alderman Clifford. Quorum.
Special presentations, beautification committee, Bob Stern.
Welcome, my committee.
Where's Jeff? That's okay.
Uh, I've been trying to thank most of our sponsors over the years. So we're doing a few every year now. Last year, we did the people that were sponsoring the show for 20 years. But now I have some other corporate companies and people in town that have been sponsoring the show for a lot of years. Like to call them up here one at a time and have them get the plaque. CJ Erickson, Paul, they have been sponsored for 17 years. Morris Engineering. They've been a sponsor for 15 years. United Trust Bank. They have been a sponsor for 15 years. CNB Bank, 11 years sponsor. And Franklin House, between Bridget Capital and Franklin House, they've been a sponsor ongoing for 10 years. Thank you again for a very successful car show this year. Thank the city for having us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob, for all your hard work. We know it's a hassle for you to put this all together. And if you remember, a number of years ago when we started this, it was just to get people to come and visit our downtown area. And from there, it spread to, I think, something we never thought would ever happen. And how many cars this year we had?
I estimated 750.
Yeah.
Every lot from 83 to 127 was full.
Yeah, I mean, and as I've said every time we talk about this, you know, we do need volunteers. So if you have some time during that period of time, and Bob is out there running up and down the street all day long from 7 o'clock in the morning, probably plus, and we could help you some help. So if you have some time, please come out and help us out. And it's just, again, get the people down to see what we do in Payless Heights. It's a great, great thing. So again, Bob, thank you and your committee for everything. I appreciate it. And sponsors, too. Definitely the sponsors. All right, under consent calendar, I've got a number of things. We've got the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting from August 20th, 2024. The approval of the payroll and the voucher list for the period ending August 30th, 2024. I've got an approval, if I could, for a request from the Girl Scouts of Greater Chicago and Northwest Indiana to allow for the Girl Scouts to conduct their annual fall product program from September 20th through October 16th, 2024. I've got two proclamations. The proclamation for the ovarian cancer awareness on September 20th, 2024, and a proclamation for the National Service Dog Month of September of 2024. I would like to take time to read this one proclamation, which is our third, last, third and final one. Definitely not the final, but I'd like to honor one of our former colleagues up here at the city council, a gentleman who was here many, many times and showed up to most of our meetings. Jack Trevillion, who passed away in July. So whereas Jack Trevillion was best friend and loving husband of Judy for nearly 56 years, and whereas Jack Trevillion served the United States Army Reserves during the Vietnam War, and whereas Jack Trevillion worked as a proud member of the Printers, Packaging, and Production Workers Union of North America while working at American Banknote Company, and whereas Jack Trevillion served as an alderman in the city of Payless Heights from 1971 through 1975, and Jack Trevillion lived in Payless Pine subdivision, where he remained a loyal and caring neighbor to all. Jack Trevillion, whereas Jack Trevillion was devoted to the city of Payless Heights and its residents throughout his lifetime, never missing any meetings, asking all the right questions, offering words of encouragement to anyone in need and making friends wherever he could. I therefore, now Robert Strauss, Mayor of the city of Payless Heights, County of Cook, State of Illinois, do hereby recognize the tremendous service of Jack Trevillion, thanking him on behalf of the residents of the entire city for his tireless efforts to improve the quality of life in our community. Now witnessed upon my signature and affixed to the seal of the city of Payless Heights on this third day of September 2024. Judy, could you kind of come up?
I could step, be on my toes.
Yeah, let's do this.
Okay. That's why I just want to thank everybody for coming. I know everyone was Jack's friend, from the mayor to the guy at the gas station, from the Monsignor who had his funeral mass, to the guy who cut the grass. Jack was everybody's friend. He had beautiful wit, humor, and a smile that just, he gave to everybody. And we won't forget him because his name is on the pole. The plaque by the entrance says John Trevillion. Well, that's Jack. And so that'll be there forever, as he will be on our hearts. And if you knew him, you loved him. And he also made you laugh. So thank you so much. I better hold this. Thank you so much. Thank you all.
Move to approve all that. And Judy, thank you for sharing him with us. All those times, too. It means a lot.
And he shared all of you with me. I had a report every time.
I'm sure you did. And finally, the approval of proclamation honoring John Jack Trevillion. With that, I'll need a motion to approve the consent calendar. So move by Alderman Key, seconded by Alderman McGovern. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
All right. No sealed bids tonight under special city officials. I've got nothing of special interest tonight, other than we've got a couple of requests here for liquor license ordinances. The first one, I need a request for a motion to adopt an ordinance increasing the number of Class A liquor licenses by one from Ashiko Restaurant Incorporated located at 7231 West College Drive. So move by Alderman Key, seconded by Alderman Begley. The operators are here, if anyone has any questions of them, they asked them to stop by. So if not, if not.
Mayor?
Yes.
Since Jack's not here, Jack always asks, what are the hours of operation?
Eleven to 9:00 p.m.
9:00 p.m.?
Yes.
Even on the weekends?
Yes.
Okay.
But that might change.
All right. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
All right. Secondly, you've got a request to adopt an ordinance increasing the liquor number of liquor licenses in Class B by one for 1918 Winter Street, Illinois LLC located at 12803 South Harlem Avenue, which is the Jewel operation there, so people don't know. So move by Alderman Key, seconded by Alderman Begley. Discussion. Is someone from, there you go. Sure, right there.
I just wanted to, is this just the change of ownership within Jewel?
Not within Jewel. It's, Jewel's being divested by its parent company. And there's a new company called CNS Wholesale Grocers through its subsidiary, 1918, is going to operate and license Jewel.
Will it still be under the name Jewel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Was that, roll call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
You're all set then. Thank you. Thank you very much. Request to approve a rental and service contract for 2024, '25, and '26 for the Kris Kringle Market with Blue Pike, Blue Peak, I'm sorry, tents. So move Alderman Key through a second.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Lewandowski. I guess this is a three-year lease for the tent, which we obviously get reimbursed from the Kris Kringle Market people, but we need to pay for the thing up or sign the lease upfront. So any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Okay. City clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No reports tonight.
How about city treasurer?
Thank you. No report.
The attorney? Any communications? Anyone have? Citizens wishing to address the council? Finance committee, Alderman McGrogan?
Mr. Mayor, no report this evening.
All right. Public safety, Alderman Bassow?
Yes, Mayor, I have three items on the agenda this evening. Items number 10 and 11, a call for motion to adopt ordinances. I'd like to turn the floor over to Chief Bill Chikowsky so that he can explain these ordinances better, both for our viewing audience and the audience here today, and for the aldermen that are not on the safety committee. Both of these ordinances passed a committee unanimously.
Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. The first ordinance is pursuant to a United States Supreme Court ruling. The city would like to adopt an ordinance as it relates to camping in public areas. This will now give the police department an opportunity, should we encounter some sort of an encampment or anything, where we can disassemble it and offer support to the person that's living in an encampment and perhaps provide them services as opposed to sleeping in a tent. And the second ordinance relates to unlawful visitation of child. This primarily pertains to when there's a court enforced order in terms to child visitation. A lot of times we get these calls where they violate these orders because the actual divorce decree is not clear on how they should proceed with these child visitations. So basically, what this will allow us to do is to bring it into court in front of the city prosecutor. And typically, what they do is, and they'll push it downstairs and bridge you to the divorce decree and perhaps amend the court assigned decree as it relates to divorce.
Any questions of the chief?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Move by Alderman Begley, seconded by Alderman McGovern for number 10 and 11. Is it both of them? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Item number 12 on the agenda.
Roll call. Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do 10 first.
Okay, for 10, it was moved by Alderman Begley and second, Alderman McGovern.
Right.
Okay. Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Item number.
Alderman Bassow, I think there's a motion on the floor for number 11.
Right.
And. I think we did them both. Didn't we do them both at the same time?
We'll take a roll call for each one.
We'll take a roll call for each one. Okay, and it was moved by Alderman Begley, seconded by Alderman McGovern. Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Item number 12, motion to approve the purchase of a Toyota 4Runner in the amount of $49,488 from Oaklawn Toyota.
Move by Alderman Bassow.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Key. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
And finally, if I may, an announcement from Alderman Clifford. The Payless Lions Club cordially invites you to our 75th anniversary and for first responders appreciation dinner honoring the members of the police and fire departments of Payless Heights, Payless Hills, and Payless Park. I can really read better than that, but I can't see better. So it's Wednesday, the 23rd, at 5:30 p.m. So everyone's invited, I would assume. Thank you from Alderman Clifford. That's the end of my report.
Payless Country Club.
Payless Country.
All right.
And it's, yeah.
Okay. Municipal grounds of property?
There is a price.
I'm sorry.
There is a price.
There was, it's a $50 ticket.
$50.
Just to support the pay.
It's free. I don't see that here. Oh, wait a minute.
It's in very small print.
It's $50.
Moving right along. Municipal grounds of property?
This evening, we just have a couple items on the municipal grounds of property agenda. I'd like to make a motion to approve payment to Beaver Den Builders for the rebuild of Lake Catherine Nature Center's ramp and stairs in the amount of $10,292.16.
Move by Alderman Begley, through a second.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Lewandowski. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes. Next, I have a motion to approve payment for the materials for the Nature Center ramp from Schillings Incorporated in the amount of $17,319.35.
Move by Alderman Begley, seconded by Alderman Key. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Very good. That's it?
That's it this evening. Thank you.
Planning, zoning, and Alderman McGovern.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I only got a few comments to make. I don't have anything on the agenda. But first off, I would like to thank Public Works. They did an outstanding job removing, getting rid of all those potholes on 71st Court, 72nd Court, from 122nd to 124th Street. Okay? I just don't know. They did a better job than most blacktop companies can do. Instead of taking a little pothole and fixing it, they widened the whole darn thing out to be about a five by six or five by seven, whatever it was, and leveled that thing down so you could put a basketball right in the middle of one of them signs and it'd come bounce right back up. A golf ball would do it, too. Secondly, along with that, I'd like to thank Golden Shoes. Okay? The cleaners next door, the next door, Joe Daniels. I'd like to thank Kefi and all those who, right off the end of that, they started working on their parking lots in the back and smoothed them all out, getting rid of all the potholes. And it's starting to make it really look much nicer, much cleaner. You know, during the daytime, there's a lot of women that walk out of their cars and walk all around there. And as they're walking around, they're hitting all these potholes. And, you know, there's women in here wearing high heel shoes and stuff like that. You know, you've got to be a little bit careful with that. These, there's a pothole in the back lot there by the mailbox that's almost as big as this circle right here out in the floor. Okay? And that's, there's restaurants there, there's a post office there. There's about six or seven different businesses that people during the daytime travel walk into. It's time for, it's the time for the owner of that building, I'm sorry, I don't know who he is, but it's time for him to match the rest of the people in the back there. Get rid of your 35 potholes that you have back there. Fix your lot. In addition to that, let's take all these garbage disposals and get them within the fence line that they're supposed to be in originally. They don't have to be hanging around all around. Take it up. There's one there that has at least six garbage disposal outside the fence line of where it's supposed to be enclosed in. Three different corporations are servicing it. It just looks ridiculously terrible. And it's, you just, somebody's going to get hurt, somebody's going to screw up. And it's just time for them to get off their, after, you know what word I'm going to say? Clean up the mess. It's starting to look worse than a ghetto back there in his one little spot. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, we'll just get code enforcement on, get them going on. Okay, thanks, Alderman. Recreation, Alderman Key?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this Thursday at 7:00, we're finally going to have the Chicago Experience Concert out by the gazebo. We had a rain delay when they were supposed to play. So we were thankful that, since this is the biggest concert we have each year, we were thankful that we could just reschedule it. So Thursday, 7:00 at the gazebo. Very large crowds come out to this. I would recommend you come out early and throw your chairs out there and get ready for the experience. And then secondly, Lake Catherine's butterfly celebration is coming up. Anyone that's ever gone to that knows that there's, it's very well attended. And they have, obviously, the Monarch Butterfly Tent. And to experience that, you have to have a pre-registration. So either drop by Lake Catherine or go to their website. The event is on Saturday, the 21st, and Sunday, the 22nd. Saturday, it's from 9:00 to 5:00. Sunday, it's from 9:00 to 4:00. And like I said, it's a pre-registration for you, for going into the butterfly tent and for the hayrides. So sign up for that. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Roads of construction, Alderman Clifford, do you have anything for Bob?
No, no report this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
I can't say just offhandedly that the roads program has started. The number of the roads themselves have, I know 750 Avenue for one comes to mind, and I think 69th have started to be ground down and resurfaced. So just a continuation of our roads program that we started some 20 years ago. So things will go on. So keep an eye open for construction crews when you're out there. Licensed purposes and franchises, Alderman Lewandowski.
Mr. Mayor, tonight I have nothing for you.
All right. Water and sewer?
I have water and sewer of the evening, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of 950 3/4-inch meters, 151-inch meters, 850 SmartPoint touch couplers, and 250 SmartPoint hardwired devices from Corin Maine for the meter replacement program in the amount of $309,200.
Second.
Move by Alderman Begley, seconded by Alderman Key. Any discussion? All I can say is I was told I am the guinea pig on this next week, so.
Yeah, I think there's about 12 families that are going to be the guinea pigs. So thank you for being one.
Yes, okay. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Next, I have a motion to approve payment to Seco Consultants Incorporated for engineering services for subsurface exploration, geotech laboratory testing, and geotech engineering evolution for the Payless Hospital water tank in the amount of $14,960.
Second.
Move by Alderman Begley, seconded by Alderman Key. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Next, I have a motion to go out for bid for the Misty Reservoir exterior overcoat. That needs to get redone.
Move by Alderman, no, okay. Move by Alderman Key, seconded by Alderman, sorry. Move Alderman Begley, seconded by Alderman Key.
Question?
Yes.
Where is, where is the?
That's Misty Meadows.
Misty Meadows. It's the.
Is that the detention pad to the left? Between the golf course and the reservoir?
It's the water tower.
The water tower.
Oh, the water tower. Okay.
Yeah, right by.
It's not being repainted. The logo is still good and all that stuff. They're just putting a coat.
No, I was making sure it wasn't the detention pad.
Oh, okay.
No, it's the, we do this every about 10 years.
Okay. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries.
Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve payment for the painting of 228 Fire Hydrants by Giant Maintenance and Restoration in the amount of $21,204.
Second.
Move by Alderman Begley, seconded by Alderman Key. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes. Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve the replacement of an eight-inch sanitary sewer main at 126th Menard by Construction by Camco Incorporated in the amount of $45,720.
Second.
Move by Alderman Begley, and seconded by Alderman Key. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve payment for professional engineering services services with RJN Group for the 2024 sewer rehabilitation design and construction on call underground infrastructure services, 2024 CCTV, and MH inspections rendering through August 2nd, 2024, in the amount of $23,288.85.
Second.
Move by Alderman Begley, and seconded by Alderman Key. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Finally, I'd like to, well, let me tell a little bit about this next situation. There's an opportunity to potentially join the water supplies that's going to be coming in through the new Oaklawn Pipe System. Currently, we're, we're receiving our water through ALSA. We would essentially have to change the direction of the water flow in the city. ALSA, it kind of runs downhill, this would run uphill. So we are, just to kind of see where we're at with this, we'd like to do an engineering